Good afternoon. This is Lacy Rice, Jr. from the Greater Hardin County Women's Network. And today we are co-hosting a forum of the Vine Grove Kentucky City Council Candidates for 2022. Our other host is the Hardin County NAACP. And the timekeeper Lenora Young is representing that organization. So let's get into it. Our candidates today are Lonnie Dennis, Mary Dunn, Selena Hudson, and Gary McCoy. So the first item on the agenda is for you to please tell us a bit about yourself. We will start with Mr. Dennis.
Thanks, Lacy. I'd also like to thank the Women's Network and the NAACP for hosting this today. I'm Lonnie Dennis. I am currently serving on the Vine Grove City Council, my first term. I've really enjoyed it and looking forward to serving another term. Past experiences before being on the city council is I was an employee of Hardin County Schools where I served as a school administrator for twenty-one years and I was a school teacher for six years. I had the opportunity to retire a few years ago after a fantastic career. And I'm most proud of the fact that my wife and I, Kim, we've been married for almost thirty years. We have two daughters and a son-in-law and we just couldn't be more blessed. So that's a little bit about me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Next, Ms. Dunn.
All right. Hi. And thank you for hosting this forum. This is a nice surprise. So I'm Mary Dunn. I graduated from Bragg County High School, so I'm not really from around here. I was not born and raised from here. Landed at Fort Knox in eighty-two, became a soldier in my late twenties, did ten years as a veteran, Army veteran. During that time, I got my education background, my bachelor's in elementary education, and took my uniform off and walked into Woodland Elementary my first year. Taught for twenty-three years. Retired out of the Early College and Career Center last year. After twenty-three years, that was where I finished up my career. And then I, I'm currently now working at the Eighty-third Reserve on Fort Knox, helping them manage their curriculum, using my skills and talents in that area. Most notably, though, nineteen-plus years in city government. I have sat on the Board of Adjustments for nineteen-plus years. Seventeen of those years were in Radcliffe where we raised our seven children. Moved over here and three years ago to retire here in Vine Grove. And there was a seat open. They reached out to me and asked me if I would sit on the board. And so I gladly took a seat here in Vine Grove. I love city government. Over a hundred years, a hundred hours of training, state training over the last nineteen years. So I know a lot about city government and I'm looking forward to using my talents and skills in that area here.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Next is Ms. Hudson.
Good evening. I also would like to thank the Hardin County Women's Network and the NAACP for hosting this forum. I do believe it's important for all voters to get to know all of the candidates prior to making a choice in this critical election. My name is Selena Hudson. I am serving my first term on Vine Grove City Council. I am also a mortgage loan officer. I've been a loan officer for nineteen years and I own, I co-own a photography business. Just a little bit about myself. I'm married. We have six kids, one in heaven, and five grandchildren. So we have a great time during the holidays. I'm running for reelection this year, number five on the ballot. Want to make sure everyone knows that. I appreciate your vote. I am also co-chairing our first Economic Development Advisory Group with Ms. Councilman Lonnie Dennis. And, and we're very proud of that. Our main objective this year is to revitalize the downtown Vine Grove. And, okay, go ahead and continue. And I just, I just feel honored and blessed to be here. I am focused on economic development for Vine Grove. That is my main focus. I teach credit and financial literacy classes for the NAACP, Mobilizing Millennials, Girls United, and any other organization that allows me to do that. You can't have economic development without community development. And so that includes our parks and keeping the city safe. And, you know, I always tell people that Vine Grove is the place where everyone wants to live. And so now we want it to be the place where everyone wants to work and play. Thank you, Selena Hudson, number five on the ballot.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. And the last is Mr. Gary McCoy. Mr. McCoy, I think you're on mute. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate being here today. As like I said before, I appreciate being anywhere because of all the sickness I've had in the last five years, but I am a lifelong resident of Vine Grove. Previously served on the council a cumulative total of twenty-seven years. I worked for civil service for over thirty. And I'm doing what I do best now, and that's nothing. So I appreciate, I appreciate everybody and the sponsorship of this. And I'd like to say I appreciate being able to here to put a face with a voice. And I look forward to being elected again. My name is Gary McCoy. I'm fourth on the ballot. And hopefully the citizens can gain some knowledge about who they'd like to support from this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. And I would be remiss if I did not mention two others who could not be here today. Ms. Donna Betson is unfortunately out of town, so she could not commit to the forum today. And Ms. Donna Spengenberger gave me permission to let everyone know she could not make it today due to her having chemo treatment. And it just left her too weak, as I talked to her earlier today. So she said it was, it was best that she not try to participate in the forum. So please keep her in your prayers. Okay, so now as we get into our question and answer, the first is to describe your city. We will start with Mr. Dennis.
To me, Vine Grove is that perfect community to live in. It's the perfect community to raise your family. So much to offer. Not only do we have that tight-knit community, it's, it's almost like a giant family here at Vine Grove, but our location is absolutely wonderful. We have great access to obviously not only just Elizabeth Town, but because of our highway system now with Highway 313, we've got great access to Louisville or great access just to travel anywhere, actually. The community itself is growing. We are one of the fastest-growing communities in Kentucky. And I look for that to continue as a result of some of the industrial developments and what have you that we have happening in our, in our county and surrounding counties. I hope Vine Grove can continue to grow. It is that, it is that nice, quiet community that sets among a lot of the noisy growth, if you will, that's going on around us. It's a great place to come home and relax. And I would like to see Vine Grove stay that way. However, I do, it's been my goal on the councils to make sure Vine Grove is ready for growth. I know we've talked a lot about infrastructure and just being ready and being able to give the people of Vine Grove what they need to be able to live and be happy here and be successful here. We have that nice little quaint town, but then around us, we are surrounded with a lot of, well, it's just a lot, it's just a nice area to come and grow and, and also for our town to continue to grow. So I think we can have both things at once. I'm getting the X. I see you down there. Thank you very much. I'll stop right there.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Dennis. Ms. Dunn, the same question.
So, well, community at its heart is its people. And as I've walked around and talked to a lot of people and watched it grow, my children played ball here over the years as we raised them. Lots of people that I know, everybody says that it's, it's just a great place to live. And when I meet people, they're, I will ask them, "So why did you choose Vine Grove?" And they said, "This is where we want to be. This is where we want to be." And community, it's people. We are, we are positioned here for the growth that's just happening all around us. We need our eyes forward. The great work that Lonnie and Selena are already doing, the groundwork, trying to bring that economic development picture in and define it in a way is so important. We've got to be ready. Lonnie mentioned the infrastructure, the improvement to the water treatment plant, getting the storm waters fixed. It's important.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Hudson, same question.
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, the question is, describe your city.
Oh, wow. Okay. Vine Grove is the best place. And I'm, I'm a little biased, but Vine Grove is the best place I've ever lived. My father was in the military for thirty-one years. I was married to a soldier for, he was in the military for twenty years. And we've traveled all over the world. And to me, Vine Grove is a community that welcomes newcomers. Welcomes anyone. It is a diverse area. We have several military retirees. We're a strong military community. We take care of our seniors. We have many programs that we were actually able to implement. Once I joined council, we were able to bring back the beloved Yard of the Month program that encourages citizens to take care of their yard and take pride in their community. We were also able to put Vine Grove first by bringing do-it-yourself workshops. We partnered with Lowe's and brought in do-it-yourself workshops so that the citizens could, could learn the critical skills that they need for homeownership. And that was one of the things that we did during the pandemic because we noticed that Lowe's and Home Depot were no longer offering those classes. It just wasn't safe to offer those classes in the store. But we were able to offer those classes at Vine Grove City Hall. Okay. But that is the community that we live in, a community that loves each other and takes care of each other.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Mr. McCoy, same question.
Yes, sir. Ready. Like I told you before, I've lived here all my life. And I love this town, our community, and the things that are occurring in our community. Some of them have come up with me present on the council and some without me. But I'm, I'm pleased to see the way the city is progressing. When I was coming up, when I was young, I think we probably had about twelve-hundred people, give or take one or two. But now we're over in excess of six thousand and still growing and subdivisions are being built. The town is being, we're trying to keep it clean. I don't think it's occurring quite fast enough to suit me, but I like to see the yards well-maintained and, and we have excellent police and fire department. Okay, I'm gonna shut up. I'll cut her off right there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. We really appreciate it. Okay. The next question. What is the most important issue facing the city? And this time we will start with Ms. Dunn.
I believe the biggest issue right now is how do we grow and maintain our small-town field? We've got to grow. We're positioned for growth, but we really need to keep our eyes on how do we, how do we maintain our small-town and grow at the same time? Economic growth is all around us, but I believe that's one of the biggest things we need to do. Working on our comprehensive plan, I think, is really important. We've got to really take a look at it and make sure that we're ready for the growth in that plan, that the plan is strengthened so that we are, the ordinances, the regulations are, are in place so that we can grow with a vision and, and get us to that point where we hold that, we maintain our small-town field, but grow. And we're positioned for it, so.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Hudson, same question.
Okay. Well, to me, our greatest need in Vine Grove is to continue working on our drainage issues. And to also piggyback on what Mary said, I do agree that our infrastructure needs to be in place to prepare for the growth that is coming, to prepare for what's coming to Vine Grove. We are going to need additional infrastructure and, of course, those drainage issues have to be completed in order for us to continue to grow the way, at the rate that we're growing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Mr. McCoy, same question.
Okay. Progress is important to this city. And during these hard economic times, it's important that we try to get some of them done without raising the taxes any more than they have to be. I can, I commend the current council. I think they're doing a wonderful job. And I know I've always tried when I've been on the council. And I appreciate, and the, the city shows that it's had some care and some plans are being made. And so I'd just be proud to be part of it once again.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. And Mr. Dennis, same question.
Thank you. I, I agree that we have to, our, our infrastructure has to be brought up to date to be able to sustain the growth that we're obviously going to see. We have folks coming to this community already, the, just wanting to be here. Well, they're coming to the entire area and they're looking for their next home. They're like, they're looking for their next place to raise their family. So like Ms. Dunn said earlier, I think we want to keep that small-town feel, but then we also have to make sure that we're prepared for the growth that's, that's coming. And that's, that includes our infrastructure. That includes taking care of what we already have, our city streets and what have you. And then also, I know our parks and what have you, we want to continue improving those. So again, that we can stay that family-oriented town that folks want to come and live in.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. All of you have touched on this next question, but now we need a little more detail. What are some opportunities for growth in the city? And this first question, or this question will go first to Ms. Hudson.
The opportunities for growth is we can bring in a light industrial business, plant to Vine Grove. We just have to be set up correctly to attract those type of businesses. We could bring in, several businesses have, have expressed interest, sorry about that, have expressed interest in Vine Grove. We just don't have the buildings for those businesses to relocate to Vine Grove. I travel all over the state on different boards. I'm with the Kentucky Black Caucus. And I attend the Kentucky League of Cities Board meetings. And I talk to the other mayors in other cities. And whenever I talk to people from other cities, I always ask them, "I know Vine Grove won't be your first choice, but when someone is ready to open up a new business, please consider Vine Grove. Come to Vine Grove." As a matter of fact, I was able to talk an entire board of directors into having their Board of Directors meeting in Vine Grove just so, because the money comes from the state down, sorry about that a little more, the money comes from the state down. So I wanted them to see Vine Grove and to see our potential. So that is, I mean, we have so much opportunity to grow. There's so much land. Thank you.
All right. Mr. McCoy, same question.
I'm gonna have to ask you to repeat it again, if I may.
Yes, sir. What are some opportunities for growth in the city?
Well, I feel like that the trend has already been set. I feel like that we're gonna be mostly residential and mostly we'll have to continue to try to support the residential because I don't even mind a bedroom community because we're running out of spaces for big, you know, a factory or something like that. So I think we're just gonna have to be content to be available to accept a business if we can locate them here and accept residential and be grateful to say that. I don't, I don't see anything wrong with the bedroom community myself.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Mr. Dennis, same question.
I think some of the potential for growth that we have is to continue being that, that family-oriented and community, but also we've got plenty of space to have some, maybe some restaurants and things like that for folks to be able to come and enjoy. I think our downtown is improving significantly right now. I think we've, we've got some opportunities there for some more businesses and what have you to come in. Some other areas of growth, I think, obviously neighborhoods. We have lots of space in our community, which is why it's so important that our infrastructure and what have you here in Vine Grove be ready to accept that. So I think we may not be that place where we have factories and what have you coming in, but I do think we are that perfect location for some smaller businesses to come in to help support the community and the families that live here.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Ms. Dunn, same question.
Opportunities for growth would be number one. I, I agree with, with Ms. Hudson when she talked about, there is room for a light industry. Not a lot, obviously, but, but every one that we get is, is another influx of, of people. They bring their, their, their business. They bring their people in. But our economic, our downtown revitalization, I know that there's state dollars out there for it. We just have to go chase it and, and get into the conversations with revitalizing our downtown. Get into those conversations with the business, the, the current owners of the buildings. A lot of the older residents, when I talk to them, they, they want the restaurant back. They want, they want a restaurant back downtown. There is room for growth and the revitalization. And we're looking forward to next year's, to next year's event season this year because of the, because of the, the closure of Main Street. We really weren't able to chase it, but really looking forward to that. And there's lots of room for growth.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. You all have kind of touched upon the next question as well. And that question is, what are your ideas for economic development in your city? And this time we will start with Mr. McCoy.
Well, fortunately, we have some things in press already in place to support economic growth. And that's good police and car protection, keep our cities clean and attractive to, for economic development and be able to facilitate it when it does come. Now, I know that we have to improve our infrastructure as some have suggested. The sewer operation is one thing because we've got to expand it and that's a, that's a key thing. And, and so I hope to see, I hope to support that and I hope it is, we can do that before long because we're gonna have to have it in place, especially if we're lucky enough to land a small plant or business or something. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Mr. Dennis, same question.
Lacy, would you repeat that for me one more time?
Yes, sir. That question is, what are your ideas for economic development?
Okay, great. Thank you. I know we, we have a corridor that runs right through Vine Grove, Highway 313, also Patriot Parkway, one of the same as 313 as it comes through our town. That is a wonderful opportunity right there for, for, for businesses or light industry to locate. And we're lucky to have, to have that, that connection out to I-65 and also going over into, to, toward I-64 on the other side of Corde and in Brandonburg. So I'd like to see that corridor out there really, I'd like to see some, some focus be put on that corridor and, and its benefit to us and how it could benefit our community more than anything. And again, I think we have a responsibility as city council members to be prepared for that and make that transition for those businesses to be able to come to Vine Grove.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Ms. Dunn, same question.
Plans for economic growth. Get into the conversations. We need growth in both places. As, as Mr. Dennis just mentioned, that corridor, that is a huge opportunity. It's right there. And so getting into those conversations, Mr. Dennis and Selena Hudson already have been, you know, putting together an Economic Development Committee, really starting to focus on where do we put our, our focus at. I do believe that there is also the, the, our Main Street, our Main Street revitalization is important. There are committees and, and organizations in the state. There's state dollars for the, for the small-town cities. You know, it's around, so there's dollars out there. We just need to get into those conversations, chase those down, get into that great grant writing, find that money, find out what other cities have done, have they done it? And then, and then just being right there at the table when, when decisions are being made.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And Ms. Hudson, same question.
Okay, a couple of things. Due to Blue Over S.K. coming into Glendale, Glendale By Force is about to grow. So Vine Grove could reposition ourselves and become like the antique headquarters for this area. We could become the new Glendale. We are positioned correctly to be the antique headquarters. We also could bring in a dinner train. We are uniquely positioned to bring in a dinner train. Any type of entertainment that would draw people to our city, such as a museum or a dinner train, we're right by the railroad tracks. It would just, it would just be amazing to be able to bring something to Vine Grove that would draw people in. And that would in turn increase our economic growth along with our RV park, which the mayor has already put into place and is moving forward with that. The local RV park is bringing in a lot of people on the weekends. So which brings restaurants. Restaurants need people. People need restaurants. So there you go. It's all coming into place. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. The next questions have not exactly have not exactly been, um, addressed yet. And, um, this time we will start with Ms. Dunn since, uh, Mr. Dennis did answer, uh, first a couple of times. So we will start with Ms. Dunn this time. Um, how can services for youth be improved?
All right, there you go. Well, as a teacher, we need it. We need early literacy. Uh, we need to address financial literacy for, for the youth. Um, my, I've also taught financial literacy for twenty, twenty-three years. I love financial literacy. Um, I believe that's a big thing, but for the youth. Um, partnering, finding ways to, you know, we're kind of like Landlaw. We don't have, um, we don't have a lot of, um, uh, we don't have a, an event space or whatever, but we do have a strong youth sports program here in Vine Grove. In fact, today was the first day for signups for the winter sports. We've got people reaching out from Mead County. Mead County asking, they want their kids playing their winter sports here. So we do have a very, very, very active youth sports here. We don't have a center per se for after school, uh, right now. Um, but we do have that. Um, and so promoting that, um, finding ways to, to, to get into the, to the, um, I don't know, tournament game would be nice, but yeah, there you go.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Uh, Ms. Hudson, same question.
Hey, well, uh, as Ma- Mary said, we do have a strong youth pro- youth sports program already in place here in Vine Grove. But we also have Rachel's, uh, park, Rachel's po- fun place. And, um, the, I keep forgetting the name, but, uh, and the Rachel splash pad is on the way. And with all of those things that we have already available and then the improvements, future improvements to Shabel Park, Vine Grove is already a place where our youth enjoy hanging out and spending time. We could improve on it with, uh, make it like making sure our parks are up to date. We could bring in, I would say, uh, a small youth center. Not, um, not anything too big because the, you know, someone would have to sustain that, uh, youth center. But some YMCA programs. And, um, just to continue to work on what we already have in place and where we're going with that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Uh, Mr. McCoy, same question.
Well, I think, you know, the, the money is an important issue in any development and especially if you go to building, buildings. But perhaps we could get some grant money if we're gonna keep our, keep our mind on trying to help, you know, build a place. Uh, I agree that the park down here is, is a very attractive thing and they have some wonderful sports, uh, you know, soccer and softball, baseball and, uh, I'm supportive of all those things, of course. Uh, I was there, I was on the council actually when it first began. Uh, and I can't tell you when that was. It's been too far ago. But, uh, it's, it's done nothing but improve over the time it's been there. And I think something like that is, is kind of the affordable way to go. And if we can find financing, uh, then of course we can talk about building a building.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Uh, Mr. Dennis, same question.
As a formal educator for a little over twenty-seven years, I know that one of the most important things we can do for our youth is, is keep them busy. And we keep them busy because of providing opportunities for them to be, uh, involved in things, uh, things that are organized for the youth. Uh, I know, uh, our local schools and what have you. Um, at Vine Grove Elementary, I know the community was a big part of us for our testing, uh, state testing, what ha- what have you. And I know the community actually reached out to our students and we used to walk downtown and um, and the community, uh, businesses and what have you would show their support by being there for them and cheering them on and what have you. I think that's part of being a community of families. And, uh, so we have to really focus on our youth and um, it, no matter if it's church or if it's school or if it's a town, if you want your community to grow, then you need to provide opportunities for your youth.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Um, the final question is, well, it's more of a statement, but describe how you would work with other candidates and the mayor to improve your city if elected. And we will start with Ms. Hudson.
Okay. Well, um, the mayor and I work very well together, but there is no, there are six council members. And there's no I in team. We can't do anything without us all working together. And I have to say that the current council, we do all work together very well. We don't always agree and it would be a mute point for us to even be there to have six if we all agreed on everything. One of us, it would not be needed. Um, so I would say that, uh, I like that we do work together as a team to move Vine Grove forward. My only campaign promise was to put Vine Grove first. And so I wake up in the morning thinking about what can we do to improve Vine Grove? And I feel like everyone on our council feels the same way. And, um, and so we just continue to work together as a team and move it forward because one of us can't do everything. But if all of us do something, then no one has to do a lot. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Uh, Mr. McCoy, the same question.
Yes, sir. Well, uh, back in the, a few years ago, when I used to walk through the communities and talk and meet with the various residents. I find out what's on their mind and usually they know what's some of the good ideas about the city. And I try to bring them to, to being and I work with anybody and glad to and glad to have discussion with them. But, uh, I try to, I try to support the community in the best way I know how. And, uh, uh, and I work with anybody. That don't mean we'll always agree, because we won't, uh, having in the past. But, uh, but, and I'm willing to stand on my own if that's what's necessary. Because I believe in supporting the community, doing the best job you can. And, uh, I, I wish, uh, in fact, I wish every, everybody, every candidate well in this upcoming election.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Uh, Mr. Dennis, same question.
As Selena just mentioned, there is no I in team. Um, everyone has to work together and, and I know, um, actually under Selena's leadership, she and I have worked together on the economic development, uh, meetings and and we've tried to put together a group of folks there to come together and just brainstorm ideas. And, you know, that's how, that's how positive things happen. And I think even on the council, we are all individuals and we bring to those meetings a, uh, uh, a different ex- different experiences and, and different, uh, thoughts uh, and ideas on thing. And, and it, it's not important that we agree on everything, but it's important that we support each other and their ideas, be willing to listen. And, um, and then when a decision's made, then we move forward as a united, uh, as a united group. So, uh, I think this council we have now operates very well in that manner. We all get along great. And I think we support each other along with the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. And Ms. Dunn, same question.
All right. There again, uh, no I in team for sure. I'm a collaborator, collaborator at heart. I don't like going it alone. I like to be part of a team. Um, the synergy or the energy that you get, uh, by being part of a team and coming together, um, does create, um, new innovation, new ways to think about something and different perspective on an issue that you're trying to bring to the table. As Mr. McCoy said, listening to the citizens and then saying, okay, if, you know, collectively, let's address this issue, how can we do that best? So working together, um, uh, being there for each other, listening to each other, uh, appreciating and respecting each other's, um, perspectives. Um, and, uh, because we all, you know, our perspec- our perception is a hundred percent of where we're at. So, um, that's where you growth, growth comes in. Taking that vision of this, of the, uh, the, uh, mayor's vision and coming together and driving it forward in a positive way together.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And so as we prepare to wrap up, each candidate will receive one minute to summarize, um, his or her campaign. And we will start with Mr. McCoy.
Thank you. Well, I've, I've just gone to the people as best I could. I don't have a, a, a big, uh, campaign going for me. I put up a few signs and uh, go through the neighborhood and talk to the people. The people are the ones that's gonna elect you, not, not publicity, not signs and so forth. So, uh, I want the best candidates on the job. If, if, if it's me, okay. And if it's not me, okay. And uh, uh, I just urge everybody to get out and support their right to vote. Vote for the candidates of your choice. And if I'm one of them, I'll be happy to represent you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Um, Mr. Dennis?
Thank you. Uh, to summarize my campaign, I've always wanted to be known as a good listener. Uh, I want to be here for our community. Um, uh, I want to be available to our community and I want to continue that. Um, I retired as an educator and, and after I retired, I missed that uh, connection I had with the community, with the different folks in the community. And so that's one of the reasons why I've really enjoyed being on the city council. It gives me an opportunity to again, to contribute, uh, and give back to the community. So, um, that's what I focus my campaign on. I, uh, I want to be a, I want to be a listening ear. And then I want to be able to share the thoughts of the folks that, that come to me with concerns and, and hopefully be able to improve their situation and improve, uh, our town for the rest of our families.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Ms. Dunn?
All right. So my, uh, campaign stands on, on listening to the people, bringing the people's voice to, um, the council, um, meeting the people, meeting their needs. Um, this, you know, Vine Grove is made up of people and they all have needs. Uh, we need to listen to them. Um, and as I walk around, I find out that, you know, when ten people have said the same thing, then maybe it's something that needs to be addressed. How do we communicate? I think communicating is a big thing. Um, people are like, why are you spending our tax dollars? Why is my bill going up or whatever? And so I love, as, as Mr. Dennis said, I love to teach. I'm a teacher at heart. Um, so when you explain the reason behind something, everybody, oh, well, okay. Well, now I understand. Now I don't have a problem with that. So, um, want to make this, um, this city better, uh, improve. I come together as a team and really help move this city forward. Um, because this is where we've decided to retire, right here, um, where everybody else wants to be. So we would, I just want to be part of that.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. And Ms. Hudson?
Well, to summarize my campaign, I just want to be helpful. My goal is to serve our community. I work for the citizens of Vine Grove. And may I never get confused about who works for who. I work for the citizens. I'm here to serve. And I'm here to help them, uh, be a voice for them, to serve them, to make things better for them. When we sponsored the blessing box, the blessing food box in Vine Grove, to make sure that our most underserved citizens have food to eat. The whole community came together to put food in that box and they have continued to fill that box week after week. And that's what Vine Grove can do. And I just want to help Vine Grove to continue to come together, be strong, move forward and just, uh, serve my community. And that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. You've heard from each of the candidates. They are vying for your votes to be members of the Vine Grove Kentucky City Council. We encourage you to please watch each of the videos of candidates, whether city council, magistrate, or any other, um, forum that pertains to you. Become informed voters. Because only informed voters will make wise decisions. Do not vote because people are your friends or because you've heard other people talk about them. Vote for people because you've actually heard them say what they will do for you. And what they can do for you. And then once you vote for them, put them to the test, hold them accountable. And then decide if you would like to vote for them again. That's part of the mission of the Greater Hardin County Women's Network is to have or create a more informed electorate. And also the, the Hardin County NAACP plays a, a great role in this county to make sure that everything is fair and that diversity also flourishes. So with that said, on behalf of the Greater Hardin County Women's Network and the Hardin County NAACP, I, Lacy Rice and Lenora Young, your timekeeper. Thank you all for participating and we thank all of you vi- you viewers for watching this forum. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate being, being here.
Thanks, Lacy. I appreciate the invitation and you've got a great timekeeper there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.